Good evening. Before we stand up for the pledge, as most of you know, our community lost a very bright light recently, someone that many of us here on council worked with for a number of years and people that work with the city. And I’m sure most of you in this room engage with Sandy Rowland in a number of endeavors. So after we finish the pledge, if you could remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Jody, would you call the roll?
Dennis.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Hollenbaugh.
Here.
Odericio.
Here.
Phipps.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Sherry.
Here.
The minutes from our last meeting were distributed for your perusal prior to this evening’s meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Correspondents, Jody, do we have any correspondents this evening?
We do not.
Okay. That brings us to lobby visitations. Do we have lobby visitations?
We do. Lindsay Durham.
If you could come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Durham and I live at 108 Fairview Avenue. I am here tonight for a couple reasons. First, I am part of this year’s Leadership BG class hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. We will be hosting a touch-a-truck event sponsored by Moser Construction. On May 11th, from 9:30 to noon, families can come to the high school to see the real versions of the toys they play with. Vehicles that will be present include a fire engine, ambulance, police cruiser, construction equipment, farm equipment, and service and utility vehicles. The first half hour will be reserved for quiet time. The cost of entry is suggested, but not required, a $10 donation. There will also be a 500-ball tennis ball drop. Whoever’s tennis ball lands closest to the target will win $500. Tickets will be available for $10 as supplies last. The proceeds from this event will benefit two causes. 80% will go toward the Bowling Green City Schools PBIS program, and the other 20% will go to Wood County plays. Second, I’d also like to take a moment to acknowledge Sandy Rowland. She was one of BG’s biggest cheerleaders. She brought out the best of Bowling Green and everyone living in it. As my role model, she exemplified the virtues of compassion, resilience, and leadership. Her ability to connect with people from all walks of life, coupled with her genuine care for the well-being of others, inspired me to strive for excellence and make a positive impact in my community. Whether it was volunteering for events, advocating for social causes, or simply lending a listening ear to those in need, she demonstrated that true leadership is about serving others with humility and integrity. In her footsteps, I learned that being a leader means standing up for what is right, lifting others up, and leaving behind a legacy of kindness and compassion. Bowling Green has suffered a great loss, and we should all do our part to continue her legacy. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ruth Walker, 214 Napoleon Road, Apartment 234. I just moved here last October from Cedar Falls, Iowa, and getting acquainted, but I was appalled to learn that there’s a surcharge, some sort of an extra charge, for rooftop solar. I’m thinking, you know, this makes no sense to me, right? I moved from a community, Cedar Falls has had public utility since I was in college there. I lived elsewhere most of my adult life, much of it, but when I moved back in 1990, it was like, they liked the public of utilities, even put in public fiber optic because the cable company wouldn’t do it. And the adjoining community, Waterloo, voted last summer to study it because it works better, and the cable company wouldn’t do it there even though Cedar Falls had it. It’s, they put it in Cedar Falls, too. The cable company duped it. So there’s two fiber lines running through Cedar Falls and none in Waterloo. I mean, they respond better when the people are in charge. But Cedar Falls, a number of years ago, also, well, from the time I moved back in 1990 from Arizona to Iowa, they’ve had a surcharge that you could pay $5 a volunteer, so they work for wind stuff. I mean, so, and I always did. I believed, even if it cost me a little more, I wanted it to work right for the world. And then a number of years ago, they opened, they built a solar farm. It was in town and kind of near a water tower, and homeowners could buy in, and I’d done that. But I live in an apartment now, I’m 83, so, you know, it’s like, if you can get some kind of a solar, public solar thing going, then especially if you can make it work so that apartment owners can buy in, too, there are many people that want to make it work for the right. And fossil fuel generation, even if they pretend to be clean, they’re not. I was a physics minor in college, but that’s not changed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and welcome to our community.
Joseph DeMar.
Hello, Joe DeMar, 517 South Main Street. And believe it or not, I’m not here to talk about the penalty on rooftop solar, except just to mention that I’ve heard that the city has actually hired a law firm out of Perrysburg to help against Leandra Harper’s lawsuit. And I do have to point out that it’s going to take a lot of years of the penalty charge against the 10 of us that have solar panels to pay off the entirely predictable legal fees that we’re going to be, that the city is going to have to pay to that law firm. But what I am here to talk about today is community solar. And Ruth touched on that just a moment ago. And some of you might recognize this T-shirt. Neocles Leontis used to pass these out. And I want to tell the city council that it’s time to look at this idea again, because right now, in the state legislature, there’s a law called HB 197 that carves out 1.2 gigawatts of capacity for solar in the state of Ohio. And this law is very likely to pass because it is sponsored, the initial sponsors are actually Republicans. And what it does is it takes money from the federal government, and that money is going to pass through the Ohio Air Quality Development Authority. And it’s going to be used to fund the development of community solar projects. So as Ruth said, these are projects that anyone in the community can buy a share of the solar panels, of the solar farm that’s put up. Now, the last time I was here, I heard a presentation that the city is planning to put a solar field near the turbines that are going to be torn down to make up for the clean energy that we’ll no longer be getting from the wind turbines. And it seems to me this is a perfect storm. It’s a perfect opportunity for the city to develop that solar field as a community solar project, so that people in apartment buildings, so that students, so that anyone in the community who wants to support solar and who can’t afford to put solar panels on their own roof will have the opportunity to do that. Now, I’ve been listening, I’ve been watching the hearings at the state level, and it appears at this point that almost any organization or municipality will be able to apply for this money. And it will substantially reduce the initial cost of building it. And so if the city goes ahead with this new solar farm, this, what I’m advocating is that make it a community solar project. This can be, the project can actually be, the funding can be given to a nonprofit, or a for-profit, or a municipality, or even a church organization, pretty much anybody who can organize enough people to subscribe to the project, that kind of organization is eligible to get this money. So it reduces the price, it gives people a chance to buy in, and, you know, I’m assuming the city won’t be penalizing, won’t have the penalty on that project, because that will go directly into the grid and not into the houses of the people that will be subscribing. So it should be economically beneficial for everyone, the city, the citizens, and it will make our electricity supply just a little bit cleaner. I’d be happy to work with the city, maybe even with the city’s grant writer, on this project. I have a number of years’ experience writing and getting grants at the federal, state, and local levels, so that’s why I’m here today, to urge you to consider that.
Thank you very much.
My name is Rose Drain. I live at 228 East Court Street, and perhaps you’ve seen the signs around town. We had our reprise of Rock the Block. The first one was on April 6th, and then just this past Saturday, we had a reprise of the event. So we’re very grateful to our donors, and these were the early donors, but on the back are more donors. And then there were some later-on donors that didn’t even make it to the shirt, but it was, it was just a wonderful experience. The fact that the Bowling Green Community Foundation had faith in us, in Bowling Green Save Our Neighborhoods group, that we could do this. And then in addition to the $3,750 from the Bowling Green Community Foundation, we raised nearly double that amount from local businesses and individuals and community organizations who donated. So the impact was really touching in terms of the volunteers’ comments. This one was written by one of the young people who came from juvenile probation. We had eight young people who came to do community service hours along with two staff, and this comment was written by one of those young people. My favorite part was seeing the smiles on the homeowners’ faces. I also enjoyed the welcoming energy of everyone. And then this comment, “To improve,” I would just say, “to try and put more filling things to eat in the snack.” Another volunteer said, having the homeowner being very thankful doing work at their house that they probably could not do for various reasons. So I sent a message to all of the 85 people that are on the BG Song email list to say that, you know, we feel very blessed to have had this community coming together to do this work, especially even though we had the help of the BGSU Leadership and Service Class for the April 6th event. May 4th was all community people, and we had nearly 40 people come out. The total number of hours between the April 6th event and the May 4th event was 550 hours We helped 16 households between April 6th and on May 4th in all the older neighborhoods of town. We did a lot of dirty work, and a carpenter donated his time to make some repairs to several houses. This is what one of the homeowners said, “God bless you and your little worker bees. Mere words cannot express my gratitude. Without you guys, this would have taken me all summer, and getting to meet such wonderful souls along the way made it even sweeter.” So my heart was full of gratitude when I got up on Sunday morning, and I sent a message to all the volunteers, homeowners, donors, and supporting organizations who contributed to making Rock the Block a success. Our BG Songs inaugural event was a shining example, I believe, of community, of people coming together to share time and resources, to build connections, one neighborhood at a time. The Bowling Green Save Our Neighborhoods group intends to continue our support for city residents and neighborhoods, so we’ll keep in touch. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vasily Kiliantis, 119 North Summit at Bowling Green. I’d like to also say a few words of thanks to BG Song, of which I am a member, and especially to the president of this organization, Rose Drain, because this organization really seems to fulfill some very important needs in the community. And I don’t, I’m not going to talk very much about this, because she has already talked about those needs that are being fulfilled twice in two consecutive events, actually, at this time. I’ll just say a few things about how I benefited as a homeowner, because, you know, I asked for help myself, and I had a crew of seven people, I believe, for four hours of continuous, nonstop labor in my garden, which looks so much better now. And it involved work that I wasn’t able to do at that time, anyway, and it would have taken me weeks to do. I am really thankful to the donors who contributed funds, as well as the BG Community Foundation that also contributed important funds, because I had a lot of mulch paid by some other people. Okay, thanks, everybody, for this. One last thing to say, I am really in awe at the organizational competence of especially Rose, because it was a huge effort to coordinate so many people doing so many different things, teams coming to assess, you know, my garden at first, measuring the garden, whatever, and doing these assessments in different places for different needs, right? Weeks before this event started. So that was, I thank those teams who came to assess needs and the projects. It was, you know, done in a very professional way, I should say, and then the organization behind it. The students of the leadership, of the leadership course at BGSU who took part in this effort had a wonderful presentation, actually, which I attended at the university, and they really analyzed, that’s the right word, they analyzed all the thought that they had put into this leadership and organization course that they were taking, a very, very detailed, formal analysis by a number of people, because they had different teams doing different things, from, you know, actually working in the gardens or whatever, doing media coverage, doing, what else did they do? A lot of things behind the scenes. And so that was an eye-opener for me. Okay, one last thing now. I think that without the, so it’s a very good thing for an organization like this to exist, okay? There’s no doubt. And it came to be because we’ve been coming here to the city council for, I don’t know, many months, and we have been involved, at least as a public, and as actually people who have contributed some ideas through a couple of years now. So I think that grassroots organizations need grassroots people, like the public, city council, and city administration. So a big shout-out to all three entities that go into the formation of some kind of organization like this. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I’m here to say that I have always appreciated that Bowling Green was one of the earliest to put up windmills, and I think that was so important for us to set that example. I think that this is equally important, that we find all the ways possible to eliminate oil from our city and go to new ways of providing for the electricity in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the introduction of new legislation. Mr. President. Mr. Robinette.
From the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024.
Brings us to official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. I don’t want to take up a lot of your time this evening, but I did want to just share a couple of the details of our proclamation that my office issued recently recognizing Arbor Day. So I don’t know, you know, how much attention you really pay to proclamations, we do a lot of them, but, you know, often these are educational opportunities. For instance, were you aware that in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a particular day be set aside for the planting of trees called Arbor Day, which was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world? Pretty interesting fact. Really what I wanted to get to is this proclamation gives me an opportunity to highlight city efforts in this regard, and I’m really proud to point out that, once again, City Bowling Green has been recognized as Tree City USA for 43 consecutive years, beginning with the first award that was presented in 1980. And we continue to, I think, show our commitment to this process by, once again, earning our 29th Tree City USA Growth Award, beginning with this first award in 1993 from the National Arbor Day Foundation. There are other elements of the proclamation, exploring the virtues and value of trees, I think that we’re all pretty much familiar with those, but I just want to take advantage of this opportunity to point out, once again, this achievement that is primarily the efforts of our arborist, or our, I’m sorry, our arborist and her staff. Actually, Bill’s looking at me because it’s now, it’s an urban forester, to more accurately represent or depict the duties of that office, but I really appreciate the work that they do continuously, year-round, day after day, to reinforce our city’s commitment to trees and their maintenance and their value. So if you have an opportunity to see anyone from Public Works or the Urban Forester staff, share your appreciation for the work that they do. It’s hard work, isn’t it, Hunter? Thank you.
Are there any questions for the mayor this evening? All right. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tretter.
Good evening, council. Want to send congratulations to our Chamber of Commerce, who had its successful annual meeting on Saturday evening. Mary Hinkleman is here from the chamber. Congratulations, Mary, to you and your staff for putting on a great event, and to highlight that many Bowling Green citizens and organizations and businesses were highlighted at that event, well-covered by our local media, and we appreciate that, and that it really highlights the diversity of our community and how it takes all of us to be a community. That completes my report this evening, subject to your questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Tretter this evening? City Attorney, Mr. Brown.
Good evening. I’d like to clarify that Leatherman and Wixler out of Perrysburg and I are co-council on the solar suit, but aside from that, I have no report.
Any questions for Mr. Brown this evening? Okay. Public Infrastructure Director, Mr. O’Connell.
No report unless you have questions.
Any questions for Mr. O’Connell this evening? That brings us to council committee reports. Are there any council committee report?
Mr. President.
Ms. Phipps.
The Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee held the required public hearing on Ordinance 9181 before tonight’s council meeting. We heard no public testimony and heard no objection on Ordinance 9181.
Any other council committee reports? Brings us to the reading of legislation. Jody, could you lead us in the reading of legislation, please?
Legislation for first reading. Ordinance Number 9194 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024.
Mr. President. Mr. Robinette.
I move to suspend the rules and give Ordinance 9194 its second and third readings.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Jody?
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended for Ordinance 9194.
Ordinance Number 9194 for second and third readings. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024.
Mr. President. Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9194.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odericio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
All righty, Ordinance 9194 is adopted.
Legislation for second reading. Resolution Number 3863 for second reading. Resolution declaring the intent of the council of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio to adopt the federally approved Wood County Hazard Mitigation Plan the federally approved Wood County Hazard Mitigation Plan as developed by the Wood County Emergency Management Agency. Ordinance number 9191 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to dispose of equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes.
Mr. President. Mr. Robinett.
I move to amend Ordinance 9191 by substitution.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'll just point out that every member of council received a copy of the language, which simply adds items for disposal as requested by the urban forester.
Anything else? Okay, Jody?
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes. So Ordinance 9191 is amended.
Ordinance number 9192 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section 31.34 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio. Legislation for third reading. Ordinance number 9182 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting chapter 33 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding employment practices.
Mr. President. Mr. Robinett.
I move to amend Ordinance 9182 by substitution.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinett.
Again, I'll point out that all members of council received a, a copy of this, the changes in the substitution, changing the shift captain title, so.
Anything else?
Mr. President, so the, maybe I'm missing something, but the, the change, the modifications we made, we received earlier today to section 33 are just a list. I mean, is this, can we, is this, is this appropriate to amend? We're not substituting this, or making these modifications. Should we adopt all these modifications in whole, or am I just?
I got an email that had changes in.
Right. I mean, is it, okay.
So I'm not sure if that.
I think it's a matter of choice.
Okay.
However, I don't, I personally don't see a problem with, given the scope of the amendments, changing by substitution is cleaner. Getting a head nodding up and down from the city attorney as well, so.
Okay, so I'm just misunderstanding what that means. Okay, thank you.
Again, it's just, I, I think you're right. We can go either way. I think this is a cleaner way, personally.
Okay, I accept that. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Jody?
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 9182 is amended by substitution.
Mr. President.
Ms. Phipps.
I'd like to offer a few more amendments to this ordinance to clean a few things up that I discussed with Hunter before the beginning of our meeting. So at a, what will be new section 33.02 as amended, there in Q, excuse me, in D, F, and H, earlier in this section 33.02, we indicate that we will be abbreviating Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund as OPNF, and then we proceed to abbreviate it incorrectly in F and H as P and FPF. And so Hunter and I believe that we should change both those misabbreviations to OPNF. So I move to change the abbreviation in 33.02F and 33.02H for Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund to OPNF.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Well, won't that make it clearer, though?
Yes, Bill.
Okay.
No discussion? Okay, Jody?
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Okay, so Ordinance 9182 is additionally amended.
Okay, and then just one more thing, Mr. President.
Yes.
This ordinance changes some numbering around in the existing chapter 33, and in doing that, in what will become the new 33.03, we have moved a table up into this section, but we have neglected to giving it, neglected to give it a title. So at 33.03, I propose to add a section C immediately above the table that will say 33.03, section C, pay scale established for seasonal employees, because that is, in fact, what this table is, we just forgot to title it. So again, I'm offering amendment 33.03, new C, with the language pay scale established for seasonal employees.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Again, Hunter, I ran this by Hunter, and Hunter has no objection.
Jody?
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 9182 is adopted, amended by substitution, amended, amended.
Ordinance number 9183 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a lease agreement with BG Dog Parks Incorporated.
Mr. President.
Member Sherry.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9183.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I think that this, the, the path that has been traveled to get to this point is another shining example of the community working together to better Bowling Green, involved a lot of people, putting in a lot of hours, not just the, the citizen volunteers, but also the administration. And I think this is yet another example, to, to add to the ones given tonight, of what's great about the city, that we have groups that will work to improve the city. And I strongly endorse the path that has been traveled and the goals that are set forth. Having said that, to make it very clear where I stand on the issue and on the ordinance, I will be abstaining from a vote because of the extent of my formal and informal involvement on both sides of this, and I don't want to have even the semblance of impropriety, but don't read that as anything other than trying to choose the right path, and then also I want to make it clear I strongly endorse.
Okay, any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dennis.
I would echo everything Bill said and reiterate or underscore one point in particular, and that is, thank you to Hunter and Jody in particular, who I know for a fact spent several very late evenings going over various provisions in this lease agreement and making sure everything was in order. So I appreciate you guys putting in the extra work on this.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Jody?
Harold.
Abstain.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Abstain.
Okay, Ordinance 9183 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9184 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting chapter 138 regarding drug offenses and amending and adopting section 139.10 regarding Clean Air Act of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we amend Ordinance 9184 by substitution.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is a follow-up to what the city attorney Hunter Brown had distributed prior to our previous meeting, and I thought it a good idea to, to let council look at it for a couple more weeks, and so it's, it's that, it's that amended by substitution, and I think it would also be very appropriate to just, I just want to say, Hunter, that I am super, super impressed at how you have dived into this issue and put so much effort into it, and I just, I'm, I appreciate you doing that.
So much more thought than Columbus. All right, so we're voting on amending.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 9184 is amended by substitution.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 9184 as amended.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 9184 is adopted as amended by substitution.
Ordinance number 9185 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into contracts for the design, engineering, and construction of the water treatment plant membrane improvements.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 9185.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 9186 is adopted.
Eight-seven.
Hmm? It's eight-six.
Okay. I'm missing one.
But we can call it eight-seven if you want.
Right.
I don't think we should.
Sorry, hang on one second. Okay. Ordinance number, here it is, sorry, 9187 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into contracts for the raw water reservoir expansion study.
Okay, I move that we adopt Ordinance 9187.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 9187 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9188 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into contracts for the engineering, programming, and construction of substation relay improvements.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 9188.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Dennis.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 9188 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9181 comes off the table automatically.
Mr. President.
Ms. Phipps.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9181.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, Jody?
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Odoricio.
Yes.
Phipps.
Yes.
Robinett.
Yes.
Sherry.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 9181 is adopted. Is there any other business to come before council this evening? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.[1791.76]